My pleasure. Thank you all for your help.
Alrighty, when we get going and as people join, they'll uh they'll join us. Are we on air?
Yeah, just could you just say got it, boss?
Know that Krista's on her way, right?
Yeah.
She should be here in a few minutes. She'll catch up. This is the. Excuse me, allergies are killing me today. Uh, this is the April seventeenth special meeting for Planning and Zoning Commission in the town of New Canaan. We are here going over two applications, two, well, a number of specific applications, but two applications. One concerning fifty-seven South Avenue and the other regarding seventeen and twenty-three Hill Street. I'll take attendance first. Uh, myself, I'm here. Kristin Nielsen is on her way, as I mentioned, Dick Ward.
Here.
Ken Turner.
Here.
On Chris.
Here.
Art Casavat.
Here.
Claire is not here. Chris Herring.
Here.
John Engel is not here. Paul Knag is not joining us and Tom Benton is here. And so we've got, so we've got six, Tom Seventh and Krista. So, Tom, have you participated and been a part of all the hearings associated with both of these applications?
I have, yes.
So we can let Tom sit in on this one. Um, so seventeenth. That works. And then a couple other people. May join us. As the night progresses. Alright, let's get going. First one is a. Fifty-seven South Avenue. I'll read the uh. The two. Sorry, uh, yeah, the two line item applications for each one of uh each one of these discussion and consideration of the. Request of Amy Zabatakas, Ruchi Law Group LLC Authorized Agent for Saint Aloysius Church Group, Church Corp. Owner of fifty-seven South Avenue, Map T Block Forty-five, Lot Ninety-eight. For a zoning regulation amendment to amend the new Canaan zoning regulations dated June sixteen, two thousand and seven. Revised December nineteenth, twenty twenty-two to expand section five point four point C to include as permitted. Special permit use religious institutions in the apartment zone at fifty-seven South Avenue, Map T Block Forty-five, Lot Ninety-eight. Then the second item is upon application of Amy Zabatakas, Ruchi Law Group LLC Authorized Agent for Saint Aloysius Church Corp. Owner for owners for a special permit of sections five point four point C. To allow construction of replacement school buildings and related site improvements in the apartment zone in and business A-zone. At fifty-seven South Avenue, Map T Block Forty-five, Lot Ninety-eight. So, um. Fifty-seven South. Um, all of you should have the special permit application resolution. Summary that was put together. I guess I'll go through this and the same as we've done for all our previous. Resolutions that we've been hearing, um. As I go through it, if you've had a chance to mark things up and have some changes or commentary, please do stop me as I'm going along. Uh, if you hear something that you'd like to change, just please raise your hand or say something, uh, people in Zoom land. Just holler out and I'll stop and we'll go through it. I'll read the whole thing, the first one and includes the uh, the findings and the information and then the resolution on this. Sister certify that New Canaan Planning and Zoning Commission held on April seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. It was moved by Zone, the second by Commissioner X to adopt the following resolution. Um, the commission has conducted through reviews and findings based on the materials and testimony. And in record and based on the fact that each member of the commission is personally familiar with the site and the surroundings. Should we be, uh, where we get into the uh, the whereas, but then into the findings, one through eleven? Should that be titled findings like we have in previous resolutions?
No, I just kind of copied it from previous smaller applications for format, um, so I don't think it matters one way or the other.
Okay. Uh, whereas special permit application and corresponding text amendment application was physically received by P and Z Department on December ninth, twenty twenty-two. Whereas planning and zoning, the commission opened a hearing on said application on January twenty-fourth, conducted subsequent hearings on February twenty-eighth and March twenty-eighth. Twenty twenty-three. Whereas the commission closed the hearing on the application, March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. The commission conducted deliberations and closed on the closed application on March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three and April seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, which is tonight. Whereas the commission concluded deliberations on April seventeenth and made the following findings. The commission finds that Saint Aloysius Church Catholic Church, Saint A's. And its campus consisting of the main sanctuary, historic Stapleton Hall, proposed school structure. And the proposed community building is a religious institution as defined in section two point two of the New Canaan zoning regulations. The regulations. Item two. The commission finds that Saint A's has been operating at its location since prior to the creation of the new Canaan zoning regulations nineteen thirty-two. And is considered illegally non-conforming use. Item three, the commission on April seventeenth approved the requested text amendment application to allow religious institutions to be a special permit use. In the apartment zone to remediate the legal non-conforming use. Number four, the commission finds that the proposed community building and proposed school building are in keeping with the design guidelines. Of section six point one two of the regulations and will enhance the properties frontage along South Avenue and Cherry Street. Item five, the commission finds that the proposed school building is smaller in footprint and bulk than the legally non-conforming nineteen fifties. School structure it is replacing. Number six, the commission finds that the proposed plans will decrease building coverage on the lot from twenty-four point eight percent to twenty-one point three percent. And will increase the amount of green space and purview area. Number seven, the commission finds the proposed site and parking plans will facilitate improved circulation of the lot during peak usage times. Number eight. Commission finds that the hundred ninety spots required for the church in its nineteen sixty-five approval have since proven to be underutilized. The proposed reduction of spaces from one hundred and seventy-six to accommodate. The proposed reduction of spaces to a hundred and seventy-six. To accommodate more vegetated islands in the main parking lot will improve the site and break up the large asphalt parking area. Number nine, the commission recognizes that Saint A's has no practical use for the structure at fifteen Maple Street. And that its demolition will assist in facilitating the church's evolution and accommodate the needs of its large community. Number ten, the commission acknowledges that the applicant has stated on the record that materials from thirty Maple Street. That are in good condition will be salvaged for future use. Number eleven, the commission finds that the application is consistent with the purposes of the regulations as outlined in section one point two. And is consistent with the applicable recommendations of the twenty fourteen Plan of Conservation and Development. In addition, the applicant, the application meets the requirements and standards of the special permit criteria. As outlined in section eight point two of the regulations. And then we get into the resolved resolution information, therefore be it resolved and upon the motion of Commissioner X and saying that it's seconded by Commissioner X. Uh, the commission voted to approve the special permit application with the following conditions, modifications and restrictions. Item one, per site development plan S E one through S E six and L O G one. Logistics Plan, L O G one, prepared for Saint Aloysius Parish. Prepared by Redness and Me dated March twentieth, twenty twenty-three on file with the Planning and Zoning Department. Per the proposed floor plans and elevations prepared for Saint Aloysius Catholic School, prepared by Peter Gisolfi Associates. Dated March seventeenth, twenty twenty-three on file with Planning and Zoning Department. Her lighting and photometric plan, prepared for Saint Aloysius School, prepared by the Lighting Design Associates dated March seventeenth on file. With the Planning and Zoning Department. Number four, an updated landscape plan with additional native plantings along with property boundary with South Avenue shall be submitted. Prior to the issuance of a zoning permit. Number five, an updated traffic analysis and site circulation plan shall be submitted. To address the school's change of use with peak usage hours now being after school for religious education purposes. Prior to the issuance of a zoning permit. Should we, uh, should we condition that? In that. Uh, the traffic analysis needs to prove that it is equal or less impactful than the original?
Yes.
I would, I would think so, yeah.
So, um, shall be submitted to confirm the school's change of use.
Should be submitted to address the school's change of use with peak usage hours now being after school for religious education purposes. And shall. Prove that the. Traffic flow is. The trafficked impact is equal to or less than the original proposed analysis. Period. And then this shall be completed prior to the issuance of a zoning permit.
Mr. Chairman, I would probably say demonstrate rather than prove.
Yeah, demonstrate. I was struggling there, yeah. Demonstrate.
We want to say like plus or minus five percent just to give them some wiggle room so they don't have to come back to us.
And I, I, I don't think they're going to have a problem proving it's under, um, given their use. I think equal to or less than is fine. Yeah.
Soon.
Okay. Yep, just, but just to, just to cover ourselves on.
That's a fair point.
And I mean, equally on four and six, we don't really. Provide a measure.
I know the applicant wanted some clarification for item number six, um.
Okay.
Cause it was.
Let me, let me read that first and then we'll go through that. Item six is for the verification of the green materials and example. Uh, can we put green materials in quotes, green quotes? Uh, in example, solar panels that will be utilized for the school and community building roofs be provided. Prior to the issuance of a zoning permit.
This is true in the past, we've had situations like this. As I recall, we've deferred to the uh. Town zoning officer, which is, we share Carrie, that she would be able to approve that. So she would need to review and approve, and for some reason she felt uncomfortable, she would kick it back to the commission.
Yep.
I would suggest we follow that path here for these two items.
I think that's fair. What are current regs stipulate in terms of solar panel? Implementation, size, scale, anything?
I don't think there's a single thing on solar panels.
Yeah, that's gonna have to. That'll have to be added in the future.
Well, not just solar panels, but you know, wind turbines, all the other things out there that we talked about.
Silence on native plantings.
Yes, it would be four and six. Yes. Yes, yes.
We're, we're silent, meaning we don't really even say anything in the regs about native plantings.
Was, it's mentioned it occasionally, but if we look at some, uh. Regulations that have been promulgated, I think by Monroe and also by uh. Ridgefield, sort of, they've done it, and so we might be able to.
Oh, no, I'm not saying that isn't possible. I'm just saying in our regs, we don't do it.
Currently don't do it, yeah.
Very much, it's, um.
I'm almost, I was just thinking for, for the point number four, Mr. Chairman, may I suggest that, you know, that an updated landing landscape plan with. Substantially additional native plantings be reviewed with staff. Before. And then we can leave it up to staff as to whether they've made a, you know, concerted effort. Is that fair?
So it does already say with additional native plantings and then it's gonna go to us, like it'll go to me to review anyway, so I don't. To me, it's already implied. Based on that condition.
Additional being a fuzzy number.
Okay, and you, you'll basically say, you know, okay, you added one plant that's not substantial enough. Okay.
It's Commissioner Turner. Um, they had indicated that they were going to work with, I believe it was Vanderbilt. And come up with some strategies for sustainability. You know, I think this kind of all rolls into it. It's not just the landscaping, it's, it's also uh, the low energy. Solar panels, uh, geothermal, whatever it might be, and I think we probably should think about maybe a. General statement that, um, that we recommend and that they will. Pursue their best efforts to come up with a comprehensive, sustainable plan for this campus.
I think it was Villanova, not Vanderbilt, but yeah. Or Catholic.
Lightly.
Don't mean to say it in a negative way.
Should we, um, Chair, Commissioner Turner, should we fold that into item six, uh, rather than? Just speaking to solar panels. But rather further verification of the uh, green material solutions and sustainability plan. That will be an example, solar panels that will be utilized for the school and community building roofs and other. Well. I guess roofs and other structures or.
And, and other strategies to accomplish a sustainable campus. But yeah, I agree, roll it into six, that makes sense.
Commissioner Chris, then what we should, in effect, the way it's worded here, I E. Latin for it S, it means. Green materials be, are being defined as solar panels as opposed to E G, ex grazi, for example. And so, um, there may be other green materials that we haven't delineated, so I would change the I E to an E G. And I would agree with you, Mr. Chairman, we should probably say quote, green materials in quotes, uh, which seems reasonable to me.
Can you read back to me what you have on that one, Dan?
Yep, give me a second.
Yep.
So further verification of the. Further verification of the quote unquote, green materials and sustainability solutions. In parentheses, E G, solar panels. That will be utilized for the school. And community. Buildings and structures. Comma. In an effort to. Uh, develop a. In an effort to develop a.
Sustainable campus?
Sustainable campus. Well done, yep. Is everyone okay with that? Wordsmithing on item six?
Yep.
Okay, I think we're good.
Um, just one small note on, can we go back to the findings?
Sure.
On, um, number five.
Yep.
In the other elements, we described the school building and the community building. And in number five, we point out smaller footprint, which I completely agree with as. Illustrated by number six. But then we say bulk, um, and I think bulk, I think it is a larger square footage because it's just two-story versus one-story. And I just think.
That's true, yeah.
Um, so shouldn't just say footprint, get rid of bulk?
Yeah, I would take out the bulk, I would just say smaller in footprint than the legally non-conforming.
His bulk is sort of a, a vague term, I would say.
Any other comments or questions? Hello, Krista? Any other comments or modifications to? This is Saint A's resolution.
Um, I apologize for being late and showing up and. Having something to say, but, um.
Well, you, you've got good timing because we just went through, uh, the findings as well as the resolutions. Did some wordsmithing to item. Item four and six.
Four and six, oh, in the findings.
In the findings.
Yeah, I got to the resolution. Okay, got it, nothing good then.
Number, number nine, and I just, is the one that.
Sorry, someone's trying to break into my car.
The, then the number nine, I just, um. I think that one's going to be somewhat sensitive just based on some of the, so. I feel it's well-written. But I just wanted to, uh. Make sure we feel good about that.
I, I remember the, uh. There, well, there was some comment, just Commissioner Chris commentary, uh, from, um. Members of the public regarding, um, I guess the old. Rector's residence, I guess the best way to describe it, what is, is what it was, um. Uh, the, the, um. Uh, views of stroke preservation and did not go into a great deal of detail. Uh, to my knowledge, and in particular, I remember what, uh. Commissioner Tuscorni mentioned, since she had been in the building a number of times teaching classes in various, uh, seasons. And mentioned some of the challenges of that building, uh, as far as heating, cooling, dampness and so on. Uh, which were persuasive for me. Um, and the relative small sizes, some of the rooms also, which are not, which are maybe practical for a priest or a nun's resident, uh, sleeping chamber. But as far as for other purposes, uh, a bit challenging. So, um, those comments were very persuasive to me and I think, uh. You know, helps highlight that, um, having, um. Local people, um, uh, decide on planning zoning issues since we've been in these buildings often many times over the years. We've driven down the streets hundreds of times and have seen traffic and pedestrians and so forth. They have a very intimate knowledge of these, uh. Of these buildings and these roads and so forth, and I think. Commissioner Tuscorni's comments on it were very persuasive for me and helped illustrate that, so I'm. I would, I would agree that this is a, an important, uh, finding and I'm very comfortable with the language in nine myself.
The only addition, as you say that, John, that I might add, remembering that the experts that we had review the structure would be something to the effect of. You know, the, the finding being, you know, the, the. That, that the commission, um. Agrees with the professional peer reviewers as to the, you know, substantial. Costs, um, to upgrade it to commercial use, um, and, and rebuilding required, because I think. I just. What I heard was it would cost basically, you know, you basically have to tear the building down and rebuild it, even though it could potentially be used as a house. For a small family, but to be used for a church, it would need to be. Basically rebuilt.
Mm-hmm.
Um, yes, and I think that's substantial because, you know, sure, if it was on the corner being potentially reused as a house, that'd be one thing, but. You know, they basically have to tear it down to, to be able to use it as a resident, to use it as a commercial building. So. I just know how. Difficult we've. You know, had, how difficult it's been to deal with a stroke structure in the past, so just.
So, we, we should probably make another item in the findings, just specifically talking to the. Um, the condition of the. The findings from the professionals as to the existing condition and the. And I don't know if, I don't know if we should describe it as a hardship, but the complexities of trying to retrofit it for the proposed uses. Something like that.
I mean, as long as you guys are, as long as it truly is part of your decision as to why you're okay with them.
It's truly part of my decision that I feel like.
Okay.
Yeah, the fact is it had looked like potentially asbestos in it, it had, you know, a failing roof, it had, you know. Bad, bad support structures for commercial use. I mean, it, it looked like you'd have to. Basically re-engineer the whole building to be able to have a church meeting in it, it.
Yeah, and, and the flip side of that is they can't use the building and it goes unmaintained. It's not going to get any better. I think we also though discussed about recycling material.
Yeah, that's number, uh, ten, I think.
Yeah, then I, that was what I was gonna add, and I know I'm jumping ahead, but I didn't know if that was a condition. We, I, I listed under my notes from last time that it was a condition or potential condition about reaching out to the Historic Society or the Preservation Alliance. So I've re-listened to the meeting discussion while I wrote this and we had concluded that we weren't gonna use it as a condition. Since they had stated on the record that they were already going to do that and we didn't think we had the authority. Okay, do that. Makes sense. So do we want to add it after item nine? The statement on the structural stuff?
I would add another line item in there.
What does the commission notes, Commissioner Chris notes, uh. Are fines, we have to use the word find, fines, uh, based on, uh. Expert testimony and public input. That the, um. Building at, what's the address, thirty Maple Street, structure of thirty Maple Street, um. Uh, has, uh, structural and design challenges to it and that, uh. In potentially including asbestos abatement matters and that retrofitting the building. For, uh, alternate church use would be problematic. Something like that.
This is Commissioner Casman, I, I just would recommend, there was no evidence of asbestos that I recall. Actually being introduced. I think we should just remove the phrase potential asbestos because there's no basis that I recall. Uh, for the presence of asbestos in the building. There might be, there might not be. I think everything else you just said is absolutely correct.
Yeah, I think. And to that point, you, you know, if there was asbestos there, there's obviously remediation solutions to that type of problem. Whereas, um, that would not. Involve, um. Rebuilding or re-engineering the building. Whereas compromised structural components, which is what we heard from both. Engineers, the professionals, both on the part of. The applicant as well as our peer reviewer, that, that compromised structure is what was driving most of their decision as to not to reuse. So I would, I would limit it to the. Discussion on structure.
Okay, so I have as item number ten, I, I did not get all of it, but so I have the commission finds based on the expert testimony and public input. The structure at thirty Maple Street has structural and design challenges to it, comma, retrofitting this structure.
And the, and thus retrofitting. Uh, the structure. To, uh.
Commercial standards, maybe?
It's to, to make it code compliant and to have it function as a, uh, modern space.
Yeah, we, we might point out, I don't think it could be used as a commercial structure in any case, as it's in a residential zone. I'm sorry, an apartment zone, right? So, so, so the notion of. Reconfiguring it to do something other than that would in fact be. Remove it from its current conforming. Uh, legally conforming status as a non-conforming use, but it can't be used for commercial in that zone.
How about this? We don't say commercial, we say for church purposes.
Yep.
Agreed.
Which is, which is what's happening on the block anyway, and we just.
This is what we're allowing.
Yeah. What's been, it's been used for in the past. For church purposes.
So, um. And thus retrofitting the structure to make it code compliant for church usage and make it function as a modern space.
That, that's fine, but it's more than just the, the structure, it's the mechanical, electrical plumbing systems. Um, you know, it's the whole infrastructure of, uh, the, the building.
I think you, you said it nicely when you said code, um, when you, you know, bring it up to code. Cause I think it would be substantial, like, cause I, I was using the word commercial as a parable to, to code, but I think.
Yeah.
Current code.
Code compliant structure and infrastructure.
Commercial is very specific meaning.
Okay, so. The commission finds based on the expert testimony and public input, the structure at thirty Maple Street has structural and design challenges to it, comma, and thus retrofitting. The structure to make it code, to make it a code, to, to make it code compliant, structure and infrastructure, that's not. And thus retrofitting the structure to make it code compliant. For church usage.
Well. Technically, we're not supposed to take into account the financial implications of, of a resolution or of an application.
Oh, just, just saying, because Commissioner Chris just saying that the building has, um. Acknowledged that the building has structural challenges, significant structural challenges. And just leave it at that.
So the commission finds based on the expert testimony and public input, the structure at thirty Maple Street has structural and design challenges.
You can say that. You can say that.
Has been.
Str- structural challenges is so general, I mean.
Yeah, I think.
You know, it 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 really needs to be. Um a complete sentence in the sense that um it needs to be code compliant. Um the structure has to be upgraded and modified for new use, uh new mechanical electrical systems. You know, it's the entire structure building that um needs help and would perhaps be prohibitive as far as cost and. Uh the functionality that you would gain.
Uh I if if I remember correctly, that there was no testimony that this particular building has. Compelling historical or design features.
Yeah, but that's not really what we asked of the experts anyway.
Well, they never said anything about it. They didn't say anything.
They were asked to comment on the structural integrity, not the historical.
Well, the other folks, the folks who some, there were some preservation people who did not, who commented on this, but I didn't find it particularly compelling. We have no information that says that it is from expert testimony uh has. Uh you know, compelling design or historical features.
Well, I I think it does, it just happens to not be in the historic district, which then. Negates the ability for us to weigh in on its historical significance in town. You know.
That's true. We might want to mention that we find that it's not in the historic district.
You could do that. I think going back, I'm sorry, could you reread the new line item ten that you started?
So um not complete yet, but so.
Yeah.
Mission finds based on the expert testimony and public input, the structure at thirty Maple Street has structural and design challenges to it and thus retrofitting the structure to make it. Code compliant for church usage and make it function as a modern space.
Would be difficult. Just stop there, that's just a finding, and it's not necessarily burdensome.
Yeah.
And I I would probably cut off the second half of the sentence saying it has um structural and design challenges and sort of leave it at that. Which seem reasonably clear based on expert testimony. Uh from both of our experts. Just leave it at that.
I'm sorry, but we also heard our experts uh talk about ADA, you know, making the building code compliant, so. How can we just cut it off at design?
Now, I think we need to keep the line in there about code compliance.
Yeah, the ADA issue, you're you're correct, Commissioner Turner, that was an issue, yeah. And it's not a trivial one either.
And then just just mentioning the inability of code compliance will cover us on. Topics from, you know, infrastructure to ADA accessibility to mechanical ventilation, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, the ADA can hold compliances, that's an issue, yeah, 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 yeah.
So that'll bump, that'll be number ten, that'll bump ten to eleven, eleven to twelve, so we'll have a total of twelve items in there.
Correct.
Okay. And then uh. Excuse me. Um do we include a line item in there for the fact that it's not in the historical district?
We could have just, it seems very obvious, I don't like, I don't know, it's not like it's anywhere near the historic district.
I I know.
So.
We don't need to.
I don't think we need to.
Mister Chairman, I'd recommend to get, let's say you have an historic building that's nowhere within shouting distance of the historic district, yet is. By any reasonable definition, an historic building, we don't want to denigrate the importance of that historic building simply because it's not in the historic district. We have many houses here that have been, that are from the seventeen hundreds, and I'm I'm not sure if they're not in the historic district.
I would I would agree with that, that's a good point. The moderns are a good example, they're not in a historic district.
I'm sorry, you were saying?
Just thinking in the current environment, when there are lots of news articles written about our judgments. Across these different things, I think it's important that we measure why this is different than Red Cross building. Which has approximate age of, you know, similar. Similar condition.
Or the library.
Or the library.
I.
It's kind of apples and oranges, it's a little difficult to uh. You know, quantify that and um. Um you know, each historic structure stands on its own, and you have to consider the program. Um why it's being replaced or relocated, um you know, I don't think it's that quite that easy to. Uh just compare against another historic building.
So do you think that we should include a line in there about it's about not being in the historic district?
No, I don't, I I I think Commissioner Chris said it correctly that um. We could have a a situation where we have a very historic building that is not is out of the historic district and um. We don't want to diminish the fact that that building should be considered uh for saving or retrofitting.
Agreed.
We've had historic buildings, like I remember there was one on Ferris Hill Road, which is what the oldest building in town. Where we came before this commission, I know it's uh it's not anywhere near the historic district, it's farther away than this building is, and um. Accommodating new development in keeping with the nature of that building was a major issue for this commission. So I think we've been to that movie.
Okay, we'll leave it out. Commissioners, any other comments, additions or deletions to this resolution? All right.
I would recommend voting on the text amendment first. You ready for that?
If you remember, if you could read the text amendment.
Yeah.
We have that.
There's no resolution for it, it's just.
It's the standard one page.
Yep, there's there's no fancy resolution for the text amendment, it's just.
No.
Question on it and vote.
Understood, but do we have the summary of the text amendment language?
It's just in the apartment zone, add as a third permitted special permit use religious institutions.
And then um so that'll be the text amendment in this, and then the second was the special permit application.
Yep.
Did the commissioners all hear that? We'll be voting on the text amendment first, which has to do with the um special permitted use of. The religious institution in the apartment zone. We'll go through that first, and then the second vote will be on the special permit application, the findings and the resolution that we just went through.
So Dan, Dan, it's Pete Gelderman.
Yep.
Quick comment, just make sure in your resolution for the text amendment that you. Have an effective date in the resolution and that the resolution is published prior to the effective date.
Sir, what would you suggest is an effective date?
Whatever date you you pick to have it effective, I mean, then the uh but it needs to by law have an effective date, needs to be noticed. Prior to the effective date, so you could have an effective date of two weeks from now and publish it.
How much notice is required?
So um we, the earliest we could publish it in the advertiser would be um Thursday, the twenty seventh. So you could make the effective date, May first.
May first.
Friday that or or the next day or May first, and then the um. Special permit needs to be recorded after the effective date. That's, and the applicant will know that.
Okay.
That's true with all text amendments, by the way.
Yep, that's fine, so notice on the twenty seventh in the local paper, and then effective date will be May first. Okay. So we'll take a vote on this again. Commissioners, this is for um the text amendment for fifty seven South Avenue Assessor's Map, Map T, Block forty five, Lot ninety eight. Text amendment to allow the religious use in uh religious use in the apartment zone.
Let's make sure in the motion someone states on the record how um it is consistent with the P O C D.
Do I have a motion on this particular application for text amendment?
I'll make the motion, um I think that we should allow this religious use in the apartment zone. It's a use that's been there that predates zoning, um and we traditionally allow institutional uses in residential zones, so this is really. In my opinion, just cleaning up um something from the past that needs to be made consistent with our zoning ordinance. And I think that our plan of conservation and development would also find this to be consistent. With that, with what it says about institutional uses in residential zones.
Do I have a second?
It's Commissioner Chris, I'll second it.
Okay, uh let's take a vote. Dan Radman, myself, I vote yes, Krista Nielsen.
Yes.
Dick Ward.
Yes.
And Turner.
Yes.
On Chris.
Yes.
Art Casava.
Yes.
Chris Herring.
Yes.
Tom Benton.
Yeah.
Thank you, everyone, that one is approved. And then subsequently, uh this is for the special permit application for fifty seven South Avenue Assessor's Map. Map T, Block forty five, Lot ninety eight. This is uh voting on all of the findings and the resolutions that we just went through. A total of twelve findings and six resolution items. Do I hear a motion on this application?
Commissioner Chris, so move that we approve this application.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any comments or conditions or anything subsequent to what we've already discussed on this?
I would just mention that I would see this as consistent with the plan of conservation development. I think we're going to have a um more sustainable building, uh or series of buildings. That will significantly enhance the uh cultural and social life of the town and uh. That is very consistent with the plan of conservation development.
Thank you.
It's Commissioner Turner, um I'd like to add to that, that the applicant has been. Uh very receptive in understanding our concerns and making changes to reflect that. I um think that they've done a tremendous job, if you compare the original design where we started. The application and where we are today, uh we've got just uh it's night and day, it's just so much better of a design. And much more in keeping with um our P O C D, the village design guidelines. And our strategic plans, so uh they're to be congratulated. And um they've done a very nice job of uh creating this building that I think we all are going to be very pleased with the results.
Thank you. Take it to a vote. Myself, Dan Radman, I vote yes, Krista Nielsen.
Yes.
Dick Ward.
Yes.
And Turner.
Yes.
On Chris.
Yes.
Our Casava.
Yes.
Chris Herring.
Yes.
Tom Benton.
Yes.
This application is approved.
Great.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Mister Uche. All right, so that takes care of our. First item. Now we move on to the seventeen twenty three Hill Street applications. So we have. Excuse me. Um we have the break zoning regulation amendment application here, we've got the.
We only have the site plan resolution tonight.
We don't.
We're we're only, we only have the site.
We only have the site plan, okay. And then we have the site plan application.
So to be clear, we're not voting, we don't expect to be voting on the site plan tonight, we're just editing.
That's correct, so this is, this is our review session, editing as required for the site plan application, and. As we've seen and experienced in the previous ones, the uh subsequent change in zoning boundary and the uh zoning regulation amendment. In turn follows the similar findings and commentary that we do on the site plan application, so those will be easier to roll out.
Yeah, we'll also have an interveners um.
Sorry.
We'll also have a um resolution for the interveners, because you also have to render a decision for them. Um that will look very similar to the one that inland.
And is that a single resolution for the interveners? It is, okay.
And just Sarah, for a frame of reference, how long, like, is that just like a page, or is that like multiple pages, the way these are?
So I have a draft right now, um let me tell you. I haven't sent it to Pete yet, which is why we're not, it's three pages, two and a half.
I just wanted to know how much time we need to talk about it.
And a whole page of it is just listing out the names of the plans that we reviewed, so.
Those matters would be reviewed at next week's regular meeting.
Correct, and I I think we expect that we'll render a decision at next week's meeting.
Correct.
Got it, thank you.
That's the expectation. Okay, let's get into this uh nice short twelve pages. Hopefully my voice holds out. So this is um site plan application for eight thirty G for seventeen twenty three Hill Street. Assessors Map T Block ninety three, Lot eight twelve, and Map T Block ninety three, Lot seventy two. Um this is to certify this painting planning zoning commission held on such and such April date, it was moved by Commissioner X and Commissioner X. To adopt the following resolution, commission uh has conducted its review and findings based on the materials and testimony. In the record and based on the fact that each member of the commission personally familiar with the site and the surroundings, so. Findings, uh number one, the applicant uh Hill Street seventy two LLC affiliated with Carp Associates. Represented by attorney Chris Smith of Alter Pearson LLC. Is seeking site plan approval to construct a multifamily housing development pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes eight thirty G for a ninety three unit. Set aside development with associated site improvements. And then we get into um in the findings in different categories of the findings. First one is site in a application history. Applicant property, applicant's property consists of seventeen twenty three Hill Street parcels T. T ninety three seventy two and T ninety three eight twelve respectively. Both lots are serviced by public water and sewer, the site has never been developed, the area equals four point seven six acres plus or minus. Combined and is located in the two acre residential zone, where minimum lot size is eighty seven thousand one hundred and twenty square feet. In twenty four, item three, in twenty fourteen. The site was granted subdivision approval for two undeveloped lots that exist today. A modification to the subdivision approval was granted in twenty nineteen, as part of this application, the lots will be consolidated. Number four, the lots are encumbered with a significant amount of wetlands and are subject to a conservation easement dated January third, twenty fifteen. That runs along the southern portion of both lots and is in favor of the town. The this conservation easement was created as part of a condition of approval for twenty fourteen wetlands crossing. To allow the construction of a driveway and underground utilities to service the two lots. No other development is permitted in the easement. Number five, the applicant in September twenty twenty two submitted a three-part application for the affordable housing development. Pursuant to eight thirty G of the Connecticut General Statutes to the commission, including a zoning regulation amendment. To amend the zoning regulations dated June sixteen twenty seven, two thousand and seven, revised December seventeenth, twenty twenty one. To add a new section five point one two Housing Opportunities Zone, H O Z. To accommodate an eight thirty G set aside development of a ninety three dwelling unit multifamily development located. At seventeen twenty three Hill Street in the two acre residential zone, Map T, Block ninety three, Lot eight twelve, and Map T, Block ninety three, Lot seventy two. Sub item B, petition for a change in zoning boundary for the property currently located in the. Located in the two acres residential zone. The request to change is to designate the properties located at seventeen and twenty three Hill Street. In the two acre residential zone, Map T, Block ninety three, Lot eight twelve, and Map T, Lot Block ninety three, Lot seventy two as H O Z. Housing Opportunities Zone. Sub item six uh C, site plan application for a ninety three unit. Eight thirty G set aside development for the properties located at seventeen twenty three Hill Street. In the two acre residential zone, Map T, Block ninety three, Lot eight twelve, and Map T. In the two acre residential zone map T Block ninety three lot eight twelve and map T Block ninety three lot seventy two. Item six, the commission received a verified notice of intervention from attorney Jonathan Shapiro dated October twelve, twenty twelve, twenty twenty two. On behalf of Mark Durkin of three eleven Brushy Ridge Road pursuant to section twenty two A dash nineteen of the Connecticut general statutes. Number seven, the commission received a verified notice of intervention from attorney Jonathan so Jonathan Shapiro. Date November first, twenty twenty two on behalf of Jeffrey Stein of twenty thirty nine Brushy Ridge Road. Pursuant to section twenty two A dash nineteen of the Connecticut general statutes. A site visit for commissioners to review and understand the scope of work proposed for the property was conducted on December ninth, twenty twenty two. Item nine, five public hearings were held to a common to accept testimony and evidence. And to receive comments from the public in December, on December twelve, sorry, on December thirteenth, twenty twenty two. January twenty fourth, twenty twenty three, February fifteenth, twenty twenty three, February twenty eighth, twenty twenty three, and March second, twenty twenty three. Item ten. An application pertaining to this proposal for associated improvements impacting the wetlands and their fifty foot buffer. Was submitted simultaneously with the town of New Kane and Inland Wetlands Commission. The inland wetlands commission denied the application on March twenty second, twenty twenty three. And their denial resolution was forwarded to this commission. Item eleven, an application pertaining to the proposal for associated sewer discharge. Was submitted to the town of New Kane and Water Pollution Control Authority in September twenty twenty two. On February seventh, twenty twenty three, the W P C A denied the application for increased sewer discharge. Next section is proposed affordable housing development. Item twelve, the applicant has submitted a site plan application proposal. That included the following reports, a traffic impact analysis, engineered site plans, architectural plans. Lighting plans, wetland buffer enhancement plan, blasting plan, geotechnical report. And an affordability plan. Item thirteen, the applicant has taken a position consistent with eight thirty G that all local zoning regulations are not. Applicable to the proposed affordable housing development and thus the proposed plans do not comply. With any elements of permitted development within the two acre residential zone. Item fourteen, key components of the site plan application include, and then we have sub items here, number one. Uh, yeah, so we've got seven sub items. A construction of a ninety three unit multifamily five story affordable housing development. With a hundred and forty two parking spots that are a combination of covered tandem parking spots. Uh. Below the structure and surface parking. Uh, with associated site improvements. I don't think that's accurate. I think the tandem, I don't think the tandem ones are covered.
I'm pretty sure they are, yeah.
Are they? Aren't they along, aren't they along the the bottom edge of the site?
No, they're, I'm pretty sure they're underneath the garage, underneath those.
Yeah.
The the original design, they weren't, all of them were not underneath the building. Um, however, I'm not sure about the if 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 that was revised.
Mister Chairman, could we just drop the word tandem? They're covered parking spots.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which seems to be the point.
I I would just. Just say.
Combination of.
Parking spots below the structure.
Of a combination of standard and tandem. And tandem parking spots, comma, below the structure and surface parking, comma. With associated site improvements.
Yeah.
B access to the site is via a twenty foot drive. Well, it's proposed twenty foot driveway.
Right, um, should we bring up the fact that what was approved is less than the twenty feet?
Um, yes, I'm just thinking, let me, let me read the whole thing and see how we can. Access to the site is via a proposed twenty foot driveway that weaves its way from Hill Street. Uh, Hill Street to the site.
Instead of saying site, maybe structure or building.
Um.
To the parking field.
Access to the site is via a proposed twenty foot driveway that weaves its way from the Hill Street access point.
To the development.
Sorry.
To the development, perhaps?
To the.
Development.
Development. Yes, to the development. Comma, crossing the wetlands, comma, with significant curvature. Um, there are no sidewalks proposed along the driveway or elsewhere for pedestrians. To utilize, nor are there sidewalks in the area to connect the site to downtown or public transportation. All traffic from the site egresses onto an undersized local road and eventually onto State Route one twenty three. Which has few signalized intersections and high speed traffic. Uh, si- traffic impacts were evaluated in the traffic impact assessment by solely engineering revised. February fifteenth, twenty twenty three. Do we need to identify the initial date of his traffic assessment and then the revised date?
I don't believe so. I think just because that's the most up to date. Version.
Mm hmm.
I would, I would think, Mister Chairman, the revised one would supersede the prior one.
That's fine. So with that, that's item B. Um.
On the first part, the access.
Yeah, I'm trying to.
We had the access as a twenty feet was rejected and what was approved was sixteen.
Correct.
So this section is just about like the facts of the application, not about what happened. So I think getting into that it was denied. Is taking away from what the purpose of this section is, like that's.
Though an access to the site via twenty foot driveway, because that's not a.
So if you just change it to a proposed.
Which is what they're proposing. But you don't think it's um appropriate to note that it's only a sixteen foot driveway that's currently approved?
So I mean, earlier we say that the inland wetlands commission denied their application, so I.
Should we add some statement under, I think that's item ten. That they denied the application to widen the driveway.
Well, they denied more than that.
Yeah.
So should we?
We get to that point and then deal with it.
Yeah. The only thing is we could say in item two, maybe as we described the lots that it's currently improved with a sixteen foot wide. So it's listed somewhere?
It it's not currently. I mean, it's, it's the sixteen foot is what was approved.
Right.
They built something bigger, larger than that.
Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, commit fellow commissioners, but my recollection is that the driveway is partly unpaved. That's something worth mentioning.
That's true.
Hmm, okay, I don't think that's gonna matter.
Okay.
I think if you put the word proposed in to be, it it solves all the issues because you're denying a proposal.
Okay.
That's a fair point.
That's fine, then leave it at that. Any other comments on note B? All right, moving to C. In addition, the site includes steep slopes and development of the site. For the proposed affordable housing development will re. Uh, and development of the site for the will require cutting into the hillside. Significant grading and blasting operations. Are proposed in order to facilitate this development. To facilitate this development. Sub item I, earthwork cut fill worksheet by Deandrea surveying and engineering dated two nine twenty three. Notes the excavation work involves removing thirty one thousand forty cubic yards of earth material. Um, the cubic, the C Y parentheses, that should be right after cubic yards.
Yeah.
And on that note, I had tried to change the dates to all be like the full wording. So that should be February ninth, twenty twenty three.
I would agree with that. The consistency, good idea.
Cubic yards of earth material for the building and surface level parking of comma. Of which approximately two thousand ten cubic yards will be relocated, leaving. Twenty nine thousand thirty cubic yards of excess material to be removed from the site via truck.
Mister Chairman, it's Commissioner Turner. Um, it's, it's more than just removing earth. Um, it, this is stone. It's uh, you know, it's not as simple as uh just removing earth material. I think we need to maybe add that uh the the material is made up of of rock that is required to be. Uh blasted to be removed and um taken from the site.
Um, Commissioner Turner, this is Commissioner Chris. I agree. Perhaps we may into address Commissioner Turner's comment. Perhaps a sentence could be added to. Fourteen C lowercase I saying um, in in addition, um. Uh, rock crushers and uh related equipment will be on site in order to um. Uh, partly pulverize rock in order to uh facilitate transport offsite. I think that covers it.
Yeah, it sounds good.
I think that that was actually addressed by solely engineering. If I'm correct, in his testimony, Kevin Solely. In his testimony and his description in terms of the volume, the regularity, the number of trucks and, you know, the frequency of trucks, the duration of the blasting, all of that. So I think that sentence that you just stated should be part of. I I proposed blasting or plan and earth removal narrative by solely preliminary. Outline sequencing for the blasting process and then write on that.
I I concur, Mister Chairman. I think it's uh, yes, I concur that.
This.
As long as we say it here.
For the blasting process, this process will involve, you know, and then we can explain. The, you know, significant, significant um. Uh, rock blasting and earth removal.
Life, life safety issues.
I I do think we want to mention the rock crusher. And putting under fourteen C double I's, you suggest, Mr. Chairman, uh, is a fine place to put it as opposed to single I.
Significant.
So what I had for um written down for the um sentence, Commissioner Chris said was this process will involve rock crushers and related equipment. Will be on site in order to facilitate this transport offsite.
Yes, can you add that to? Uh, I I.
Yep.
That would seem to be unambiguous.
Mm hmm.
And I'm, I'm not sure where it belongs, but uh the duration of the rock crushing and excavation, um, I think. They said it would take over a year. Um, I don't know if we want to find some place for, you know, the time period that uh this will impact. The neighboring community as far as life and safety.
So that gets um mentioned later in the traffic. Part of it, um, I believe we talk about the number of trips for trucks it's going to take um in the traffic section.
Yeah, uh, Commissioner Turner, I think then our um find in our later on in the document, we we review some of those items. I I'm hoping we'll get to that.
Good, thanks.
Okay. Uh, item D. To accommodate the regrading of the hillside and the increase of impervious area by sixty five thousand nine hundred and ninety six square feet. One point five two acres. The applicant has proposed a stormwater management system that is comprised of catch basins with deep sumps and traps. Hydrodynamic separators, subsurface retention and infiltration systems, a subsurface detention system, a level spreader. Pervious pavement driveway entrance and a vegetated roof. These features are further described in the drainage summary report by Deandrea surveying and engineering P C revised on February fifteenth, twenty twenty three. Item E. Landscape and lighting is proposed. The plant schedule prepared by solely engineering revised January nineteen, twenty twenty three. Includes three trees, four understory trees, twenty one grass plants and two hundred and eighty upland shrubs. Is that it?
Yep.
Seems.
Point.
Seems really light.
I think that's the point.
Just three whole trees.
Highlighting that.
Yep.
Think I planted more on my property. Um.
Yeah.
Item F. The affordability plan submitted by the applicant describes the rental amounts and they appear to be consistent with eight thirty G requirements. Twenty eight of the ninety three units or thirty percent of the twenty eight of the ninety three units comma or thirty percent comma. Will be deed restricted as affordable housing. As provided by Connecticut general statutes eight thirty G. Fifteen percent of the units shall be deed restricted at sixty percent of the state median income. And fifteen percent of the years shall be deed restricted at eighty percent of the state median income. Item G. On the final night of public hearings, March second, twenty twenty three, the applicant submitted a conceptual plan. For a secondary means of egress through an existing access way at thirty four Urban Street. And an ADA compliant pedestrian pathway along the main driveway to connect the development to the public way. Given that the conceptual plan was submitted on the last night of the public hearings. Lacked sufficient detail or analysis and that the applicant would not disclose their legal rights to the access way. The to the proposed access way.
Yeah.
The commission did not take this conceptual plan into consideration. I think that's all true. Fifteen, the commission finds, based on the testimony received throughout the public hearings. That the affordable housing development application does not protect the public's substantial interest in fire and life safety. Pedestrian and vehicle safety and the natural environment. The proposed, the proposal impedes vital potentially lifesaving firefighting operations. Creates den- dangerous pedestrian and traffic conditions for residents and visitors and will irreparably harm the site's natural environment. Item sixteen, the commission finds that no reasonable changes can be made to this proposal to remediate their concerns. Section fire and life safety. Item seventeen. Um. So I do, fire and life safety is. Is the next.
Section, it's the next section after findings.
After. So it's findings and then fire and life safety?
Yep.
And then why are we in findings? We did not. Um. For for site and application history and proposed affordable housing development, we did not give them an A or B or denomination. But we are for fire and life safety.
I can give them a letter denomination you would like.
Let's do that.
Okay.
Firelife safety expert testimony was received by three fire safety experts. Andrew Kingsbury, the town's consultant, Joseph Verstig, the applicant's consultant, and Mark Tebets, the interveners consultant. All three consultants C V's are in record with, and the commission recognizes all three consultants, consultants expertise. However, the applicant's consultant contradicts the findings of both the commissioner, the commissions and the interveners consultants. Therefore, the commission elects to accept the findings of Andrew Kingsbury and Mark Tebets as accurate. Item A, sub site driveway deficiencies. The commission finds that the proposed twenty foot wide single access driveway creates an immediate fire safety hazard. For construction workers during construction and for residents and visitors of the affordable housing development post-construction. Number nineteen, the commission finds that should a life threatening emergency occur on the site. The twenty foot wide driveway does not have the capacity.
Twenty foot wide driveway.
Twenty, the proposed. Twenty foot driveway does not have the capacity to accommodate residents exiting the site either on foot or in their vehicles. Comma, without delaying or potentially impeding vital emergency vehicle access. Item twenty, Andrew Kings.
Mister Chairman, um, Commissioner Turner, um. If I understood correctly, I believe that um it required. if I understood correctly, I believe that um, it required emergency vehicles to actually drive on the grass shoulders um, beyond the twenty foot width. Or was it the, the eighteen foot or whatever with um, the shoulders, but um, wasn't there an issue that um, the drive was not, the paved part of the driveway, the hard surface was not wide enough?
I don't believe so.
I, I, I'm trying to remember if that was.
I think, I think maybe um, the De- DePani, Dave DePani, I think he said that it might overhang, like the, the wheels wouldn't go on it, but his concern as a firefighter was that with why is there maybe some overhang of?
Which was a safety issue because people are coming down and the trucks make a turn back of the truck could.
But that's, that's not the, the only thing, and um, Pete can correct me if I'm wrong, but that that isn't evident on the um, truck turning figures and it wasn't noted by Andy Kingsbury, so while you know, a volunteer firefighter didn't tell us that, I don't think we can consider that expert testimony.
Item twenty, Andrew Kingsbury states in his January nineteenth, twenty twenty three correspondence, a review of the truck turning figures in the case of proposed fire department access road is as configured would be problematic. New Canons most demanding piece of fire apparatus. It's twenty, two thousand three Sea Grave one hundred foot aerial ladder dash three would have to utilize both lanes of traffic and the full twenty feet of width curb to curb to negotiate into and around the complex. Fire apparatus would have to drive against oncoming traffic in several locations along the access road to reach the complex. Additionally, there are no sidewalks shown. I think, actually, let's stop there. I think that's what you're referring to, uh, Mister Turner. Was that in that condition where the uh, fire apparatus would have to drive against oncoming traffic, they would have to drive on the shoulder and into the grass in order to maneuver around that.
That's, that's, yes, I agree.
Um, so why don't, we can add that in there.
It's a quote.
No, it's a quote, that's right. So we'll, we'll have to leave it like that, but curb to curb to negotiate and kind of fire, fire apparatus would have to drive against oncoming traffic in several locations along the access road to reach the complex. Uh, additionally, there are no sidewalks shown on the plans for pedestrians to utilize or cyclists to take refuge.
Mister Chairman, two points, I think these are ones I suggested. The original quote in the draft was on the third line, it was it's, it had apostrophe, which was wrong. It's now correct, so if it was, if it was originally, was it verbal, was it verbal or was it written?
I copied and pasted it was written.
It was written, was it? It's with an apostrophe?
It was with an apostrophe.
Then you have to put the apostrophe back and then leave the sick in there.
Oh, okay.
Sick means as stated, so it's usually for something that is maybe a typo or something.
And then the refuse.
The final one was take refuse with an S rather than a G. And again, if that was how it was originally written.
You know, so I'll change it but, back to refuse and then.
Refuse and then need the sick afterwards.
Got it.
So we want to keep the direct quote, direct as stated.
Fair enough.
Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Item twenty one. Mark Tebets states in his January twenty fourth, twenty twenty three correspondence, most difficult problem for emergency responders will be access for the ladder truck. With tight turns to negotiate in the development, the road needs to be completely clear. With a single exit from the site, one vehi- one vehicle, even a delivery truck could tie up, delay or completely stop an emergency response to the building. This can result in serious consequences to the building's residents and guests, close quote. Item twenty two, Mark Tebets additionally stated in his January twenty fourth, twenty twenty three cor- correspondence. The single access to the site is not adequate for the size of the building and the number of residents, close quote. Item twenty three. The commission finds the S curve in the narrow, single driveway entrance, single entrance driveway will create additional dangers for emergency vehicle access as residents exit the site in an emergency. Item twenty four.
Mister Chairman, I'm wondering, um, on twenty three, say, in the proposed narrow, single entrance or? If we want to.
In the proposed, yep, just before narrow.
Yes, sir.
So we've got the diagram in here. That's in item twenty five.
Yep.
Almost feel like referring to it below, but it's okay, we'll save it for twenty five then. Item twenty four. Uh, New Cana Fire Chief Albert Bassett on March twenty second, twenty twenty three public hearing stated that from his twenty years of experience of firefighting in the area, he has found that people will exit the site when fire alarms are set off. The S curve of the single access driveway will cause even more issues than a straight driveway as exiting cars will impede emergency vehicle access to the site. Item twenty five, the figure below, truck turning figure two, prepared by solely engineering dated September second, twenty twenty two illustrates the path, a twenty or twenty, excuse me, the path our um, the path of the, the path of the two thousand three Sea Grave one hundred foot aerial ladder three will take up the site driveway, comma, driving into oncoming traffic on the S curves.
We change it to, we'll take up the, the proposed site driveway, just keep it consistent.
Uh, subsection B, site and neighborhood circulation and emergency situations. Item twenty six. The commission finds the site's internal circulation and parking lot layout creates a dangerous firefighting and emergency response situation for residents, visitors and emergency response personnel. Item twenty seven. The structure cannot be fully accessed on all sides for emergency vehicles and multi-point K turns are required for fire apparatus to turn around on the site as illustrated below in the truck turning figure three prepared by solely engineering dated September second twenty twenty two. Item twenty eight, New Canan Fire Marshal Paul Payne and Fire Chief and New Canan Fire Chief Paul Bassett. Just because there've been so many different fire chiefs, both current and retired. Um, New Canan Fire Marshal Paul Payne and New Canan Fire Chief Paul, um, Chief Bassett. Uh, you should put his.
We put his name in in the other section, so I, I just.
I don't think you needed.
Okay, that's fine, yeah. Both stated on the record that the multi-point turn turns fire apparatus, that the multi-point turns, the fire apparatus, the fire apparatus must complete to turn around on site are not practical. Item twenty nine, Andrew Kingsbury in his January nineteenth, twenty twenty three correspondence notes the following. First item, both fire apparatus access roads inside the complex dead end at the north end of the proposed complex and do not provide full circulation. The access roads also exceed a hundred fifty foot length in length and have inadequate provisions for emergency vehicles to turn around. Truck turning sheets TT one and TT two show emergency vehicles having to perform a multi-point K turn in order into K turn to turn around and exit the complex. Sub item two. Loading zones have not been indicated on the submitted plans. Parcel delivery vehicles such as Amazon, FedEx, UPS, et cetera, along with food delivery services such as Gruphub, Uber Eats and others and others, comma. Will create, oh, it is a quote, sorry, forget it though. Will create obstructions for emergency vehicles. Moving vans, refuse removal, livery service vehicles, maintenance workers and occupants moving in or out of the complex will cause additional obstructions. Circulation, uh, sub item three, circulation for emergency vehicles around the complex will be challenging in several locations. An area of concern is the front of, is in front of the lobby main entrance. In addition to potential obstruction from delivery and standing vehicles, the island adjacent to the lobby creates an added obstacle. Point thirty, Mark Tebets in his January twenty fourth, twenty twenty three correspondent notes the following. First item, fire department, emergency vehicles will be placed immediately adjacent to the building as a result of the site layout. During a fire, radiant heat from the building will affect placement of fire app, department vehicles and will hamper effective attack on any developing fire. A significant fire in the garage portion of the building could have a significant effect on a safe and effective response to the fire because of the close, narrow, limited access around the building. Sub item two. Due to the layout of development, it is impossible for fire apparatus to access the building from all sides. This will further prohibit effective firefighting operations. This can result in serious consequences to the buildings that residents, guests and firefighting personnel.
It's a quote.
Oh, it's a quote, shit. That's right. Uh, item three. There is extremely limited space near the building for turning emergency vehicles. The tight turns and the islands create significant barriers for fire apparatus. Any significant fire will result in the need to have at least one ladder truck and two pumpers. When responding to a fire emergency placement of the ladder trucks and pumpers during the initial attack is extremely important. Once the outriggers for the ladder truck have been deployed, the entire roadway will become blocked. Pumpers laying lines from the hot yard hydrants will also block the road and create additional significant safety concerns. The single access point into this large residential building is not adequate and will create significant public safety issues for the residents. This can result in serious consequences to the building's residents and guests. Item thirty one. The commission finds that the conditions of these surrounding local streets have the potential to create dangerous conditions for emergency responders. Hill and urban street are undersized streets that permit on-street parking. As many of the residents do not have garages or ample parking in their driveways. A single car on hill or urban street could significantly impair emergency response time and emergency vehicles ability to get onto the site. Section C, required second means of ingress and egress for fire apparatus. Point thirty two. The commission finds that a second means of ingress egress for fire apparatus is necessary for this development. The single access driveway is too narrow to accommodate the needs of a development this large built into such a challenging site. Item thirty three. Andrew Kingsbury in his summary and recommendation section of his January nineteen.
Chairman, if I may, on thirty two, I'm wondering, we just mentioned um, second means of ingress and egress, I, I, I think what's implied here but not stated is that inappropriate sized and designed ingress and egress, since we have an ingress here and egress, but it's not in our view appropriately designed or sized, and so there may be a second ingress and egress created, but it may be undersized or heavily curved or have other aspects that could impair its functionality for emergency services, and so we may want to state something like that here. As opposed to just having an ingress and egress, right kind of ingress and egress.
So I would maybe wait, like I would hold that thought to see if you still feel that way after we get through the whole subsection because this kind of details the evolution this requirement went through because um, at the end of it, the fire marshal, like Paul Payne is requiring it using our fire zone ordinance, so it would have to be designed to be.
Fair enough.
So I would.
Let's, let's put them in advance.
And then.
Fair enough.
That's fine, it's good. Item thirty three. Andrew Kingsbury in his summary and recommendations section of his January nineteenth, twenty twenty three correspondence states, the applicant should add a second fire apparatus access road due to the potential of impairment or blockage of the current single access road. Hill Street should be designated a no parking zone in the vicinity of the complex. Item thirty four. Mark Tebets states a similar conclusion in his January twenty fourth, twenty twenty three correspondence. A second access road or at very, the very minimum, a second fire department access road should be added to ensure the safety of the building's occupants. Point thirty five. Fire Marshal Payne and Fire Chief Bassett have maintained that this site is problematic and requires an additional access for firefighting operations to ensure the safety of all residents and visitors. Item thirty six, originally Fire Marshal Payne cited the twenty twenty two State of Connecticut Fire Safety Code, Part Three, Section five oh three point one point two and put on the record that this development could not move forward without an additional access drive. The applicant requested a modification to the state fire marshal's office or, yeah, to the state fire marshal, that's fine. Which was granted on Ma- March first, twenty twenty three, nullifying that requirement. Item thirty seven. Um, would you start item thirty seven with subsequently Fire Marshal?
Sure.
Subsequently, Fire Marshal Payne at the March second, twenty twenty three public hearing, comma, clarified that while the state fire marshal had granted the applicant's modification request, there is a town ordinance which is not appealable to the state that will be utilized instead. The sec- this section titled Fire Zones is enabled by section twenty nine dash two ninety three of the State of Connecticut General Statutes. As stated in the chapter twenty three, section five of the town's ordinances and bylaws requires, when deemed necessary by the fire marshal, that an additional fourteen to twenty four foot wide fire zone or access way be constructed only for fire apparatus usage. Item thirty eight. The commission finds, does that address your concern?
Yes.
Okay. Item thirty eight, the commission finds that despite the approved modification from the state fire marshal, a second means of egress and ingress and egress for emergency response vehicles is being required by the fire marshal to facilitate vital, potentially lifesaving firefighting procedures. Should we add in there second means of ingress and egress for emergency response vehicles at a minimum? Missioners, any comments or questions so far? Okay, next section is pedestrian and vehicle safety. Expert testimony on the topic of pedestrian vehicle safety was received by six consultants with expertise in building and fire code and traffic engineering. Those consultants include the town's code consultant Christopher Lo- Low. Is it Low or Low?
Wow.
Wow. The town's traffic engineering consultant, Robert Beltramitis. P E, the inter readers' code consultant, Mark Tebets. The interveners' traffic engineer, Mohammed Siddiqui?
Siddiqui.
Siddiqui? P.
Is that P E? I had this, I thought it was P E or maybe.
It should be P E.
It should be P E, yeah. That's what that was, yeah.
The applicant's code consultant, Joseph Verstig, and the applicant's traffic engineering consultant, Kevin Solely P E. All six consultants CVs are in the record and the commission recognizes all six consultants expertise. However, the applicant's consultants contradict findings of both the commissions and the interveners' consultants. Therefore, the commission elects to accept the findings of Mister Lau, Mister Beltramitis, Mister Tebets and Mister Siddiqui.
Excuse me, Mister Chairman, um, however, I should say, and the less, and so were the applicant's consultants plural contradict, no, us at the end, because I assume they've, they have um, two uh, consultants here, so it would be a plural rather than a singular.
Yep.
It's a knit, but.
Yeah, it's good. Uh, section A, pedestrian access and safety. Item forty, the commission finds that the lack of sidewalks within the proposed development creates immediate and irreparable harm for pedestrians. The site is not accessible for pedestrians, especially those requiring ADA accommodations. Pedestrians do not have safe access through or around the site, which poses a threat for residents and visitors on a daily basis and in emergency situations. Item forty one, Christopher Lau, the Bill, Town's Building Code reviewer noted in both his code reviews sent to the commission dated November eleventh, twenty twenty two and February twenty second, twenty twenty three that the lack of a paved pathway from the. That the lack of a paved pathway from the exit discharges of the building to the public way. Violates the State of Connecticut Building Code, section ten twenty eight. Item forty two. Mark Tevis stated in his January twenty fourth, twenty three, twenty twenty three correspondence. That there is no handicapped access to the street. Handicapped residents are required to provide, to be provided with accessible routes to shopping and transportation. Not making this site accessible is a violation of the ADA. Item forty three. Donald Polland, Ph D, A I C P. Was hired by the applicant to estimate the number of school age children. The proposed affordable housing development may house. His report estimates that across thirteen grades K through twelve, eighteen public school age children may reside. At the development. Item forty four. The commission finds that the proposed site and its lack of sidewalks proposed. Poses immediate and irreparable harm to all school age children who may utilize the bus to get to school. Children who currently live on Hill Street or Urban Street are. Picked up by the bus at the intersection with state route one twenty three. As school buses are prohibited from using Hill or Urban Street because of the roads with. Uh. With rain because of the because the roads with ranges between fifteen and twenty feet. The estimated eighteen children going to school from the development. Would be expected to walk down the twenty foot wide driveway dodging any vehicular traffic without sidewalks and then wait in the road.
Mr. Chairman, I I may be aging myself, but uh I assume some students still walk to school.
Not gonna do that, still not gonna do that, okay. South school, yes, but not east.
Not east.
Not east or west.
Fair enough. Yes, at East School, yeah. It's too far from the, okay, fair enough.
Item forty. They walk to South School because there're sidewalks. Just saying. Um. Forty five.
Hmm.
The intervenors' traffic engineering consultant Mohammed Siddiqui P E states in his January twenty fourth, twenty twenty three correspondence. The children living on Hill Street have the option to walk to the far east end of Urban Street. Or the far west end of Hill Street to board the school bus. Since there is no continuous sidewalks on Hill Street or Urban Street. Children from the proposed development must walk in the active site access driveway and. Hill Street or Urban Street to access the bus. This is not a safe scenario, especially when there is snow and snow slash ice on the ground and when it is dark. Section B vehicular circulation. Forty six, the commission finds that the proposed development will cause immediate and irreparable harm to the safe vehicle safety. To vehicle safety as it pertains. To the site circulation and vehicular movement throughout the intersections adjacent to the site driveway. Item forty seven. The commission finds that during construction, the number of truck trips required to haul the twenty nine thousand thirty cubic yards of material. Out of the site will significantly disrupt Hill Street. Item forty eight. In his January twenty fourth, twenty twenty three correspondence, engineer Siddiqui states. At the hearing, the applicant testified that it would take between two and a half to. And five months to blast and remove rock spoils from the site with an estimated twenty two thousand eight hundred truckloads. This would result in five thousand six hundred total truck trips during the construction period. As trucks enter the site empty and exit the site loaded. If it is assumed that this process would require between. Sixty and ninety working days to complete. It is projected that Hill Street residents would be exposed on a daily basis. To noise and vibration for an extended period of time by approximately ninety four and sixty two. Daily truck trips respectively. In what sense? Between the two streets? Maybe I'm just not reading this right. Ninety four and sixty two respectively referring to what?
I think the sixty versus ninety days to complete it, like if they do it in sixty days, it would be that number of trips if they.
Oh, so we should reverse it, so. For an extended period of time by approximately sixty two to ninety four.
I mean, this is a.
It's a quote.
Oh, it's a quote.
But I mean, no, I mean, that makes sense. If you're doing it in less days, that would be more.
Yeah.
Trips.
Yeah.
So I think it makes sense because it's between sixty and ninety and then it's ninety four and sixty two, so. Would be less.
Is there any way to? Pete, is there any way to correct that and note it with a sick or something?
Well, what's what's incorrect about it?
The the order.
I don't think so.
I think the order's right, so if you're doing sixty days, you're gonna have more trips.
Oh, I see, yeah, sorry, I wasn't following, you're correct.
Yeah.
Got it.
Any more throughput?
Yep, yep. Further, there are also safety concerns as a result of conflicts between constructions trucks. And the residents as children play in the street and walk to and from their school bus stop. And residents back their cars out of their driveways. The slope of Hill Street would further. Uh, exacerbate the safety conditions. In addition, the weight of these trucks when loaded could damage the pavement of Hill Street, causing further safety concerns. The applicant's traffic report is considered incomplete as it did not discuss the high volume of projected construction traffic. Forty nine. Further, the commission finds that post-construction, the proposed affordable housing development will cause immediate and irreparable harm. To vehicle safety on Hill Street and adjacent intersections. Item fifty. Robert Beltramitis P E, the commission's traffic engineering consultant. Notes in his February twenty fourth, twenty twenty three correspondence that two intersections will see a level of service degradation. From the no build to build conditions as stated in the traffic impact assessment by. Solely Engineering Revised February fifteenth, twenty twenty three. The southbound approach of Hill Street at the unsignalized intersection with New Norwalk Road, state route one twenty three. And the southbound. Urban street approach at New Norwalk Road see the most significant degradation in level of service. Engineer Beltramitis also states that the applicant's report quote. May underestimate the real impact of the southbound approach of Brushy Ridge Road at New Norwalk Road, state route one twenty three. Item fifty one. In his January twenty fourth, twenty twenty three correspondence, engineer Siddiqui. Expands on his cons- on this concern and states, quote. If additional trips are added to the traffic network during these peak hours due to the underestimation of. Home, truck, van deliveries and for hire vehicles for the affordable housing units. The analysis results would show longer delays and move closer to a level of service of F. At fifty seconds of delay per vehicle for unsignalized intersections. Item fifty two. Engineer Siddiqui concludes the following in his January twenty fourth, twenty twenty three report. Point one. The Hill Street corridor is poorly designed. And is not able to safely accommodate the significantly higher traff- the higher vehicle traffic, including trucks. Proposed to be generated from a multifamily development. Item two. The higher number of daily truck trips during rock spoils removal would adversely affect Hill Street residents. Due to noise and vibration concerns and safety concerns. Point three. Based on the. Increase in traffic delays to unacceptable levels, poor sight distance and high speed of vehicles. It will be difficult for southbound vehicles, especially trucks, to safely turn left. From Hill Street to eastbound New Norwalk Road, Route one twenty three during peak weekday travel periods. Point four. Left turns from Hill Street will continue to be difficult to complete safely as a result of poor sight distance due to a sharp curve. And downward slope on southbound Brushy Ridge Road. And point five. The development of affordable housing should be located in an area with an existing sidewalk network. So that vehicle vehicular traffic and auto ownership would not be mandatory. And school age students would not need to walk in the street. Next section, wetlands and environment health. Uh, environment health or environmental health?
Probably environmental.
Yeah. Point fifty three. The commission finds that the proper protection of wetlands and watercourses is necessary to protect substantial public interest and environmental health. While the commission did hear from numerous experts regarding wetlands, the commission elects. To defer its findings relating to wetlands to the New Canaan Inland Wetlands Commission. Fifty four. The denial resolution issued by the inland wetlands commission on March twenty second, twenty twenty three. Was voted on subsequent to the close of the site plan applications. Public hearing pro- but prior to the rendering of the commission's decision and has been added into the record. Point fifty five. The inland wetlands commission found that this application will have a significant adverse effect and adverse impact on the wetlands. Or and or water courses on the site.
So I copy and pasted that from their decisions.
Oh, did you? Okay.
That's how they worded it in theirs.
Saw that coming.
Yeah.
It's a good idea.
Fifty six. The commission incorporated the inland wet- I mean inland wetland commission's consultants report into the records. This includes the reports dated November fifteenth, twenty twenty two, December twelfth, twenty twenty two. February twenty first, twenty twenty three and February twenty seventh, twenty twenty three by Joe Canes P E of Tian Bond. And the reports dated November fourteenth, twenty two and two, December thirteenth, twenty twenty two, February four- twenty fourth, twenty twenty three. And March first, twenty twenty three by Michael Klein, professional soil scientist of Davison Environmental. Point fifty seven, the commission and the inland wetlands commission. Had the same intervenors and received the same reports from their consultants dated. November first, November twenty first, twenty twenty two, December nineteenth, twenty twenty two and February twenty seventh, twenty twenty three. By Robert Sandolo P E and Lawrence Liebman, chief environmental scientist of S E Minor. Balancing the testimony versus the need for affordable housing. Section A quantifiable harm. Point fifty eight. The proposed ninety three unit set aside development submitted under the provision of eight thirty G will cause immediate and irreparable harm to the public's interest. In the protection of life and property of those residing at or visiting the proposed affordable housing development. Pedestrian and vehicular safety on and around the site, comma, and the environment. Environmental health of the site. Point fifty nine. The proposed affordable housing development proposes a single driveway that is narrow and provides insuff- that is too narrow. That is too narrow and provides insufficient access for emergency res- for. Um.
Emergency vehicles, I would say, rather than response.
Yeah. Uh, insufficient access for emergency vehicles. It poses an immediate threat to all residents and visitors if a life-threatening emergency occurs. Point sixty. The lack of a paved exit discharge pathway for pedestrians outside of automobile traffic. Automobile traffic. Sorry, outside of automobile traffic lanes not only violates state of, state should be capitalized. State of Connecticut Building Code, section ten twenty eight. But also promotes dangerous jaywalking throughout the site and onto the public way that creates immediate unsafe conditions for pedestrians. Point sixty one. The proposed affordable housing development will cause immediate and irreparable harm to Hill Street and adjacent intersections during the post-construction. During and post-construction as pedestrians. Has as pertains to vehicle circulation and safety. Point sixty two. The proposed development as determined by the inland wetlands commission. Will have significant adverse impacts on the wetlands or water courses on site. Which comprises the public's substantial interest in public environmental health. B. Need for affordable housing. Point sixty three. The town of New Canaan continues to make assertive and creative efforts. To increase units of affordable housing and over the past several years has successfully boosted the stock. Of affordable housing units with the redevelopment and expansion of both our Millport Housing Community and Canaan Parish. The latter of which saw an increase from sixty affordable units to one hundred affordable units. The community of New Canaan has utilized resources from the town, New Canaan Housing Authority and the state of Connecticut. To build and improve high quality and affordable housing in the town of New Canaan. These efforts have integrated the resources of the town and provided significant housing opportunities. For low-income senior and veteran households in order to enable diverse residents to live in New Canaan. Point sixty four. At its own initiative, the New Canaan Planning and Zoning Commission has updated and enhanced its zoning regulations. To mandate that the development of five or more units on a property. Must contain a minimum of fifteen percent deed restricted affordable units. In addition, New Canaan has adopted a permit fee to fund the Affordable Housing Trust. For the benefit of low-income households. Point sixty five. Affordable housing is appropriate and welcome in all residential and commercial zones in New Canaan. What is inappropriate and dangerous to the public is a proposal that fails to protect the substantial public interest in fire safety. Vehicular safety, pedestrian safety and environmental protection. That pretty much does it. Um, then it, you know, we get into the last paragraph of the therefore and the resolved and talking about the. You know, um. Requiring the preservation of life and property, et cetera. But that's basically where we're at with this resolution commissioners. Um, does anyone have any additional comments, suggestions, additions or deletions?
Could I just ask one quick question? Did we hear anything more about? I I recognize that we discussed that the uh fire commissioner. Was imposing a second rule with respect to the access and egress. But what is the status of the state response? To the request for or or New Canaan's. Uh, appeal of that initial decision.
So um I checked in with the fire marshal late last week and there's still no update.
This this is the same request where he asked that the state fire marshal visit the site, correct?
So he, I my understanding is he appealed. The modification that was granted and is requesting that he visit the site and reconsider, but there.
Still no reply.
Still no reply.
Uh, so so my question, Sarah, uh maybe this is really to you, Sarah, is. Should we not add that point that in fact, notwithstanding the. Application of the other rule, there is a pending open item. With respect to a request to the state commissioner to reconsider their change of the rule?
So um Pete may be able to better speak to this, but my understanding is that we can't speculate and deny based on waiting for the approval of something else. Or denial of something else, so I think leaving it as is makes most sense, but Pete.
If if the commission was uh of a mind to approve an application, it could make the approval contingent. Upon that subsequent decision, but uh anything that happens is is outside the. The record actually, since the public hearings closed, so whatever. Happens really is not going to be a basis. For the commission's decision because it's beyond the record, it's outside of the record.
But but Pete, correct me if I'm wrong, it was part of our discussion.
It was.
And the resolution or the the desire to get an appeal of that decision was part of our consideration.
It was, that part was, yes. Uh, I mean, if 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 a sentence that said um. I don't know, I don't recall if that a- appeal was referenced at all in the resolution, but um. You know, a sentence that simply said it's unresolved uh as of the date of this vote.
My only question was that relevant because um we're Paul Payne is, you know, electing to use his. Fire zone ordinance, so he's gonna require regardless of if this appeal gets overturned or not.
Well, I mean. Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead, Arthur.
Sure, Pete, uh my question is, is if in fact the applicant then um. Proceeded to argue that. Payne approach was for some reason insufficient or inadequate. If we failed to mention the fact that we also. Find the approval that was granted without review. Or was it, it would certainly be a factor in my decision a- a- as a commissioner, I think we should refer to that.
Yeah, I I think it's fine to refer to the fact that there was a decision, it's been appealed. I don't think that's a problem at all.
So maybe um at the end of item thirty-six, where the last sentence is the applicant requested a modification, um, null- last end of it is nullifying that requirement. Do we just add another sentence that says? Um.
Just say that.
Fire Marshal Payne has appealed the modification.
Has amu- has appealed and and as as of the date of this vote, there has been no decision.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So I have Fire Marshal Payne has appealed the March twenty-one, twenty-twenty-three decision, and as of the date of this decision, no decision has been rendered.
Yeah, that works.
Should we change it down as and as of the date of this vote, no decision?
And as of the date of this vote, no decision has been rendered.
Yep.
Okay. So unless anyone else speaks up, I think we're comfortable with the the draft here for this particular site plan resolution. Um, we can then.
I have a, I just have a question for Pete. Um. Does, will Dan have to reread this whole thing at the April one, or can we just say her?
It's it's good. It's been read. Uh, the purpose of reading it is so the public has an opportunity to hear it, and so it's been read in full.
So at the next week's meeting, we can just reference. You know.
Correct. The 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 resolution is read on the um April seventeenth meeting.
Right, but then for the other two resolutions that are still to be drafted, will I have to read through each one of those?
Only the parts that are unique to those
Okay.
applications is what we we generally incorporate all of the things in the in the site plan resolution into the map amendment and text change, but only read the parts that are specific to the text and map changes.
Yep, agreed.
I do have one change, which I noticed on number sixty-four, Mr. Chairman. Um, the last sentence says to fund the Affordable Housing Trust. I'd simply say the town's Affordable Housing Trust could be in terms of state or federal or something like that.
Yeah, that's a good point.
More clearer.
To fund the towns.
Cause we're talking about stuff we are doing. It more emphasis that that's something we have done. So it makes the point more strongly, so.
Yep. Okay. I think we're good. Um, that concludes our items for tonight.
Oh, it's too short.
No, well, we're not done. The other item, so the the plan is we're gonna vote on this next week. Uh, as we all just heard, we'll touch on uh any of the differences between the different resolutions. Won't have to go through all of them and we'll conclude this one. The one remaining item. Actually, there's two. One is unlisted. I'll just, it's commentary by myself. But the uh P O C D subcommittee decision. Um, so we need to get the um P O C D subcommittee um uh put in place. We've sent out an RFP to uh, what was it, five different firms?
So.
Well, well, it's like posted to.
It was posted on like five different websites and
Right.
sent out to a couple of firms individually.
And the due date for the RFP is?
April twenty-seventh.
April twenty-seventh, so we'll we'll see that coming back to us at the end of next week. Um, and subsequent to that, in May, we'll start to need to have meetings of the P O C D subcommittee. The goal is to have um ideally uh an odd number, either five or seven committee members um to sit on this committee, uh chaired by one person um and kind of help steer the the vetting of the um consultants that we're gonna be speaking to. Uh, and then once we select a consultant, working with that consultant for approximately a period of a year ballpark, um, back and forth on um modified drafts of the P O C D as necessary, um, using obviously the current one that we have as a template and then building upon that. Um, depending on which consultant we choose, they're gonna probably have a different methodology of how to go about that. Um, and we'll just need people to be available for the subcommittee meetings. Uh, most likely, they will be monthly, I would think, or maybe bimonthly.
I'm not sure at this point.
Yeah, we're not, we're not certain at this point, but um, you know, it will involve a lot of um. It'll involve review of those drafts when they start become available from the consultant. And then a lot of takeaways for this consultant to come back and and provide modified versions as necessary. Eventually, those that uh draft of the P O C D would be um, the draft would be approved by the uh subcommittee, and that would be brought to the larger commission as a whole um to be reviewed and approved and voted on. So uh to that end, do I have any peo- anyone in particular that might be interested in being on the P O C D?
Everybody.
Wow, everybody. Who do I see in Zoom land?
See Kent.
Kent? Yeah, Kent's waving. So three, four, five, that gives us six.
A couple of people missing tonight.
Yeah, a couple of people missing.
So my thinking is we need to maybe shoot me and me and Dan an email if you're interested so we can, you know, understand what the numbers are. I think at the end of the April regular meeting, we should have it finalized who's on it. Um. There's also, so timeline wise, just so all commissioners are aware, I think ideally we pick which firm we want by the May at the, at the end of the May meeting, um, just for, you know, budgeting reasons and stuff. We um. We need to have something signed and approved by the Board of Selectmen by June thirtieth.
By June thirtieth, okay.
And their um their Board of Selectmen meetings, which we'll have to go to to get approval to um actually sign the contract are uh June sixth and June twentieth. So I think in a perfect world, we're on that June sixth agenda, so we have some wiggle room.
Was this a, an RFP or RFQ and is it pu- is it posted on our site?
Yeah, so it's an RFP. It's posted on our website. It's on um the Connecticut um APA website, Massachusetts, New York, Rhode Island. Um, yeah.
Do we have an indication of whether people are are gonna respond? You know, like, do people say, yeah, we're gonna, we're choosing to respond or not, or?
So I had um, I emailed it to two firms. They both responded and said that they were interested. Um. I received an inquiry from Fairfield County's um, some sort of affordable housing firm who's not able to deal with the whole scope, but she's, they're interested in, you know, having some sort of advisory role to help assist with the affordable housing component of it. So that's about all the feedback I've gotten so far.
Okay.
So.
Okay. So, once we select the committee, um, put a committee together, hopefully agree to that next meeting. Um, that committee would probably have to meet um, early to mid-May.
Yeah, I mean, we have the um May special meeting
Mm-hmm.
as an option if, you know, that's a date that people already have marked where.
What's what's the uh, what's the agenda looking like? Considering where we're at with these larger eighty-three G applications since S A's. What's our, what's our agenda looking like for the next thirty days?
Long, still, we have um. What, so we we have to finish Hill Street, which I presume will take an hour about just reading through everything. We have one site plan, two small residential special permits, one of which was continued from last month. Um. We have the field club who wants to add a
Mm-hmm.
paddle court. I've heard nothing from the neighbors, though, so we'll see how long that takes. Also, the police station.
Ah. Is that a preliminary application or is that?
No, it's a special permit. Formal. It's a formal special permit application.
A completed app, a completed design solution for the police station.
Yep.
Yeah.
They even show where their mechanicals are going, so. Everyone cares about so.
Yeah. We have anything on the uh the playhouse or like the?
Nope, players.
Haven't heard anything. Are we gonna start the um field club next week?
Yes, we have to.
Okay. Okay.
And I was thinking I have the police station on a, if there's time and, you know, they're aware that they're probably going last, so if we're out, they'll get pushed.
They're aware of the ten-thirty rule?
Mm-hmm.
Good. Stick to it. Okay. Sounds good. Um, the last item, um commissioners, I don't know if you've driven around town in the last forty-eight to seventy-two hours. Um, but you may have seen that the demolition at the library has started. Uh, I would encourage you to swing by there tomorrow if you haven't seen it yet. And what was uh, what was evidenced in the last twenty-four hours of demolition is that what everyone was purporting as the nineteen thirteen library and how little of it was left um, seems to be contradicted by what was exposed on site. Um, the majority of the original structure was still intact behind furred-out sheet rocked and partitions. Um, and still in place. Um, we tried to reach out to the library to discuss potential um, solutions around keeping the footprint of the real nineteen thirteen that was still intact. Um, but apparently everyone was too busy to respond. Lisa Oldham responded at six-thirty tonight. Um, by six-thirty tonight, the majority of that rear portion has already been demolished. Uh, they took it down today. So we weren't able to save that. Um, we'll see what happens with the rest of it, but there's been hurdles along the way in terms of leaving the building exposed to weather and you know, dem- demolition by, by by uh ignoring the uh condition of the building. Um. But we'll see what happens. Uh, you know, the, this plan is still in place. We voted on what portion was gonna be moved and relocated back in November of last year. That's what the applicant has to hold to. Um. We'll see what happens. But I would encourage you to go take a look to see what what was exposed and what was there, because I know there was a lot of representations made by the applicant's team about the condition of the building, the, the existence of portions of the building or lack thereof, which now is evident that it was all there. Um, so it's a little, it's a little disappointing, but go take a look.
I have a question about, just this is because I truly don't know. I I see that all the windows have been removed from the nineteen thirteen building. Is that just so that they can lift the structure up and move it? I don't know if anyone know, on the commission knows the answer to this or if that.
I do. We, we actually approached them a week and a half ago, I think, about that.
Some, maybe two weeks ago.
Maybe two weeks ago when the windows were first removed. Um. Their their application was clear from last November. If you can look back to it, but they provided a sort of a a picture diagram of different components of the building and the windows. They specifically noted three options, one of which was to repair the existing ones and re-glaze and as in situ. Um, the second one was to take out the sashes and um, and provide thermal units in the sashes. And the third option was to completely remove and replace with in-kind windows. We reached out to the applicant. They said that they started to remove them. Some of them are salvageable and that they're have, being restored. Others were just beyond repair and they're gonna just replace with sim liking kind. Um, the problem we had is when we saw that the web openings were open to weather. They did not protect them. They did subsequently go back and put plastic on them, so they're protected from weather now. But um, as part of the demolition today, again, more of that existing structure on the back was exposed, so hopefully that'll get protected as well. So. So I guess uh my word of caution to commissioners and my word of advice is don't necessarily believe everything an applicant tells you. And I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you, everyone. Oh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. It's too early.
You guys can hang around and chat more? Great.